We'll start off with Mayor Casper. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir. We have a proclamation in honor of Arbor Day. It's an annual tradition here in City Southgate, having been a tree city for some 25 years now. So whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, beautify our community, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the City of Southgate has been recognized since 1994 as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Southgate do thereby proclaim Wednesday, April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day in the City of Southgate, and urge all the residents to support efforts to the care for our trees and woodlands and to support our city's Forest Street program. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, Mrs. Friends, good evening.
Officials' reports?
We're on the official-- I'm sorry. We're on the officials' reports. Mayor, did you want to continue on?
Yeah, I'll go on to the reg-- after the proclamation.
I apologize. I thought you wanted on.
No, that's not all my report, but thank you. I mean, we'll try to be brief.
But you needed a breather there.
Freudian slip on my part, I apologize.
I'll give him my time.
This past Saturday, we had a very productive discussion regarding our budget for the upcoming 2019-20 fiscal year. The public workshop was attended by all of our elected officials and department heads. I'd like to thank all who attended. Saturday's workshop sets the framework for our annual budgetary process, and that'll start again with the May 6 council meeting, where there'll be a public hearing regarding the proposed budget. And then on May 20, the administration will be requesting final approval. This annual process is focused on sound fiscal management and keeping the City of Southgate on a solid financial footing. I commend our city administrator Dustin Lent and Finance Director David Angelieri for coordinating this effort, and all of our department heads for once again working within our financial constraints and providing a realistic and balanced budget. This month marks the second anniversary of the implementation of our trash cart program. It has proven to alleviate many of the issues that we had faced prior to using the trash carts. However, part of the ordinance also requires that the trash carts be properly stored on non-trash pickup days. Our residents are asked to properly store their carts in their rear yards or in an area not viewable from the street. Please adhere to this standard and keep our neighborhoods looking great. Otherwise, our ordinance officers will be enforcing complaints regarding improper cart storage. And lastly, I'm pleased to announce that the State of Michigan American Legion Council has selected the City of Southgate for next year's statewide convention. The event will take place in June of 2020. I'd like to thank local American Legion Zone One Vice Commander Jim Austin for his efforts in bringing this activity to Southgate. We look forward to more information as the event draws near. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Now, Madam Clerk, Mrs. Friends.
Good evening. I would just like to remind everybody, since it is spring, and I had a door-to-door salesperson at my house today, just to remind everybody to make sure that they have a city permit showing. If they do not, let them know they need a city permit. They should get one. And if they want, I would think they could call the police, report it to the police. Or if it's daytime, call the clerk's office and we'll take care of it. And also, I'd like to remind everybody, or wish everybody a happy Easter. That's it.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Mr. Roush, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everyone that the Southgate Education Foundations have a heart gala. It's Thursday, May 2. It's from 6:30 to 10:30. It's at Crystal Gardens. It's $50 per person, or $350 for a table of eight. You can get tickets, I'm sure, still at the board office. It includes a buffet dinner, a DJ, photo booth, and door prizes. And they will induct the first of the Southgate Hall of Fame of the inductees. Congratulations to them, Mr. Jim Skura, who recently passed away, Marilyn and Chuck Saluto, and our own mayor, who will be also inducted. Those three were all-- or those four, I should say, were honored. So congratulations to them. I heard that many of them got more than one nomination, so that's a good thing. That means people think you're doing good things for-- or have done good things. So congratulations to all them. And again, happy Easter to everyone. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Clovis, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Saturday's Easter egg hunt was a great success. There was a large turnout of children, parents, and of course, the Easter Bunny. The case commission, along with Parks and Rec Department, did a wonderful job in putting together the event. Last night, I was not able to attend the case commission meeting because of a prior family commitment. And I want to thank Karen George, councilperson Karen George, attended, as my alternate liaison to the commission. She'll be providing a report as to what was discussed and what took place, future events. Lastly, I had a chance to tour the fire department today concerning the renovation that their fundraiser paid for. And I want to acknowledge certain companies that put out a tremendous amount of time, money, and effort. Father and Son Restoration volunteered hundreds of hours to completely renovate the sleeping quarters of our first responders. Also, Hoffman Home Restoration and TDP Plaster and Drywall Restoration assisted in completing the project. Homespun Furniture in Riverview donated all the flooring. Southgate Art Van Pure Sleep gave a discount rate for all the mattresses that were replaced, and some of the mattresses were 10 to 12 years old. I want to thank all those who donated and provided our first responders a better working environment. Lastly, I want to wish everyone a very happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clovis. Mr. Roulat, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Just one announcement. The Southgate Community Players are going to be closing out their 62nd season with Barnum. That opens May 3, May 3, 4, 10, and 11 at Davidson. And it is the musical Life in Times of P.T. Barnum. And you can get tickets at scp onstage dot com, or you can call 734-282-4727. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Roulat. Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public safety, there was no meeting held. But Parks and Recreation is very busy. Spring soccer, it's got the highest number of youth members ever enrolled. Girl softball has begun. The Down River Senior Olympics is in its final revision phase and should be ready for registration and more information in the next couple weeks. The Splash and Dash is beginning registration. That's in June. We've had another hockey organization move from Brownstown to Southgate using our ice. The ice rink, ice hours are completely sold out now. Little League Baseball will be having their opening day on May 4. And the next event to arrive is the 44th Annual Spectacular on Ice, our annual ice show, April 26 to the 28. Showtimes are Friday, April 26 at 7:30, Saturday at 1:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m., and again, Sunday, the 28 at 2:00 p.m. And you can buy pre-sale tickets at the recreation office. And that's all I have, Mr.--
Thank you, Mr. Farah. Mrs. George, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Library Commission met last week. They did elect new officers for the year. The chair is Christian Grassa, vice chair Joe Pastor, and secretary is Mary Lamos. Storytime is ongoing, and soon they will be adding a sensory storytime. Again, they will be offering the summer reading program. Registration begins June 17. And new this year, they're going to be offering an adult summer reading program. Director Don Priest made a presentation to the seniors last Thursday. They enjoyed it. He did a good job, and they asked a lot of questions. So a big thank you to Don for informing the seniors what's going on at the library and the services that are available. Saturday, the 27th, is National Drug Prescription Takeback Day. Just a reminder to our residents, they don't really have to do it on that day. Our police department will accept any unused medications and prescription drugs. No questions asked. You just take them in, you put them in a plastic envelope, and they dispose of them. You don't have to give your name. If you don't want to take them to Southgate, many of the other police departments do offer this service. It's seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Allen Park, Melvindale, Riverview, Wyandotte, and probably many of others. So do get rid of any unwanted medications so that you don't have them laying around the house, just in case somebody's looking for them. And we don't want to have a problem with drugs. Also, at the library, on May 8 at 6:00 p.m. or 6:30 p.m., there will be a presentation by Joe Grimm, who's the author of the Faygo book. Those of us that are a little bit older, we can remember Faygo, the Faygo Red Pop, the commercial. So it will be an enjoyable evening. That's May 8 at 6:30. So learn about Faygo Pop, how it grew to become a giant independent bottler, and its tough choice between growing and staying. I plan to attend. I know it'll be an interesting night. Also, I did attend the case commission meeting last night. It was a very, very interesting meeting. The mayor and his wife and our DDA coordinator were also there. And there was a lot of discussion for future events. The case commission is a sponsor for the 2019 Concerts in the Park at Market Center Park this year. And we will have more updates on different events that they will be hosting in the future. I too would like to commend them on the Easter egg hunt. I think every kid in Southgate and possibly from some of the neighboring communities was at the egg hunt. It was really a great experience. They were coming right up until the last minute. And the weather held out. It was sunny, a little bit windy, but a nice day. And I would just like to give a plug to all of our commissioners and volunteers. They are what makes the city go. It isn't really us. It takes many to put on these events. And a big thank you to all of our commissioners and volunteers. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Mrs. George. Very well put. Mr. Zemeckis, good evening, sir.
Yes, I'd like to send condolences out to the following families: Thomas Montalara, Laura Coleman, Marcia Woodley, Roman Curry, John Bryan, Carolyn Gilman, and Tony Clayton. And my Polish proverb for the day: The children of a peasant are an asset; the children of a gentleman are liabilities; the children of a nobleman are thieves.
Wow.
And I'd like to wish everybody a happy Easter, too.
Find all these problems.
If I could say it in Polish, I believe our mayor might be able to say it in Polish. I can't.
No, I don't know Happy Easter. I know the other holidays, but I don't know Happy Easter. Sorry.
And before we go on, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Easter. And for the Orthodox Christians, happy Easter for the following weekend after that. Mr. Lent, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Tonight on the agenda, we are going to have one scheduled person in the audience, Mr. Chuck Verbeest. He is the gentleman that has been here in the past during the construction that was on Reek Road. Mr. Verbeest lives on Dumay Street. He is complaining about speeders that have gone down Dumay Street. So we were able to get the shield signed there. And if he has come here to talk, we can kind of go over some information on that as well. We also have, under Communications A, a letter from the mayor to purchase a solar arrowboard. We obtained the bid through a partners and U.S. Communities Procurement Organization. It's a national organization that goes out to bid for some large street construction equipment. So they were the lowest bid through that procurement ordinance. And then under Communications B, we have a letter from the mayor for an appointment to the case commission. Is there any questions on the three items that will be on tonight's agenda?
Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none. Anything else, Mr. Lent?
That is all I have for today.
Does anyone have any questions or comments pertaining to our short agenda this evening?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. George.
I would just like to add to what the mayor said about our trash containers. A lot of people do still put them in the street. And I know that, oh, after all the bad weather that we had, and there was so much debris in the street, and the sweepers were starting to get out, and I'm thinking, oh, I hope they come down our street. And then I look out, and you see these containers in the street. And I don't know what we can do about it, but people need to know that the containers don't belong in the street. And I've had complaints about that, too.
Thank you, Mrs. George.
And I'd like to say, I was talking with our ordinance officer, and he was saying that he has been going out two, three, four a day, trying to remind people about quit leaving your garbage cans in front of your house, take them in the back, give them a warning. Next time, you'll get a ticket for it. So-- and then I also, too, on that, because I've mentioned to people, and actually, a neighbor right across the street, and he still puts his trash cans in the street. And I said, you know what? Eventually, street cleaners come by. At winter time, you got snowplow. You need to do that. Yes, young man?
Good evening. Through the chair, I just want to mention something on our prescription box. If we could remind the people, it's pills only. We're having a constant problem with liquids, needles, and other products. It's pills only. That's all we'll take. If they have liquids that they need to dispose, the best method is to get a bottle of cat litter, dump it into that, let it dissolve in the cat litter, and get it, however you want.
I thought that they could do the liquids.
No, no liquids. It's pills only. Because we have to, yes, we have to take those out. And we've been running into a lot of hypodermic needles, aerosol cans for other types of medications, and lots of liquids.
So it's only pills?
Pills, period. Pills only. They can put them in a giant Ziploc bag, bring them in and deposit them.
Can it be even like old vitamins?
Vitamins are fine. Again, same thing. Dump it into a Ziploc bag, bring it in, and drop the bag in.
Right. Okay. Thank you for coming up and clarifying that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I think in terms of the trash carts, it's just a matter of continuing education. And, you know, people get lax if they're, you know, if they don't realize it. And we're trying to, we're trying to educate people rather than ticket people. And the idea is, as you've indicated, we give warnings, and then if that doesn't, if it persists, then we have to go to the route of citing violation.
I can actually say, I went to four people on the block and mentioned it, and they're, they said, oh, we didn't know that. So now they're got them in the back of their house or something. So I said, well, thank you.
And while we're talking, the subject, too, they need to be off the street, true, but make sure they're not underneath a low-hanging tree. Because unfortunately, the branches will be damaged as they pick those up, those carts up. So you want to keep it away from a tree as well.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will break at 10:27 for 10 minutes. Seeing none, we will break at 10:27, for about 10 minutes.